Thank you.
That's a new one.
Okay, let's rise for the pledge.
Seven oh two.
I guess he's looking for a flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States.
We have one.
Oh, good.
And.
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody, welcome to the town of Ulster zoning board of appeals meeting for June. Mind me, I want to bring up the agenda for tonight.
Sorry, I'm late.
You're fine.
My phone keeps on falling over everybody, so I've got it set.
All right, Gabby, why don't you give us a roll call? I think we're all here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Turkleven?
I'm present.
Mr. Reggino?
Here.
Mr. Shultis?
Here.
Chairman Porter?
Present. Okay. Moving with tradition. Okay, everybody read the minutes, so I'm going to request that we have an approval of last month's minutes.
I'll approve them.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think we have it passed.
I could do a roll if you'd like.
Could you, could you please, because we're getting intermittent responses here, so I'm really not seeing everybody.
No problem. For, for all the votes, I'll do the roll call just to be safe.
Just to be safe. We don't have to do long call. I'll say yes.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. Okay. All right. I'd like to move, we go into public hearing for, well, we're in a continuation as public hearing, so we don't really have to go back into it. This is for Diane Donnelly, Z four oh one, one thirty five Van Kuren Highway, Kingsley, New York. She's looking for the variance to allow manufactured home outside of a manufactured manufactured home park.
Bob, we really should have a motion to reopen.
To reopen?
Yes.
Because I make a motion where reopen this public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
I'll do, Ms. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. Okay, I'm not going to read it again, but it's about Diane Donnelly, Z four oh one, one thirty five Van Kuren Highway. To have a manufactured home outside of a manufactured home park. Ms. Donnelly, are you here? Are there any representatives for Ms. Ms. Donnelly? Present.
I do not see anyone and I haven't had any contact with her.
You had no contact with her, and I know you have reached out to her multiple times. We've had that.
Numerous times, yes.
Yeah, we even had that discussion this morning.
Gabby, has anybody talked to the building department on her behalf about what's going on with this application?
Only the one neighbor Nora, I'm about to fill and the, on the property, and that's, that's the only contact I've had.
Okay.
So we've had no motion on this since the last meeting, then? Correct? Because that's the same, I remember speak, she spoke at the preliminary, I believe. We're sent a letter then, correct?
I think she spoke. Didn't she speak to us two meetings?
Well, that was, I think Mrs. Ms. Donnelly spoke to us when the preliminary. But we haven't heard from her since, plus her neighbor, which Gabby's referring to here, I believe, and so is Andy, has sent a letter out stating that she believes it's filled with all kinds of nasty stuff, just to put it that way. We haven't heard since.
In, in addition to that, Jason, maybe you can be, you can weigh in on this, but weren't they trying to cite some HUD guidelines where it wasn't eligible for any kind of a zoning or?
I had a couple of discussions with Ms. Donnelly. Most recently, it was the day before the May meeting. I advised her of the meeting. I told her she really should attend via Zoom. She told me she would. That was last month. She didn't appear. First thing first, I think we should close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll make the, if nobody's here to do it, I'll happily make the motion to close the public hearing, so we can move on and discuss this.
I'll second that.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
So in my opinion, I think she's lost interest, right? Because otherwise she would be here. Maybe we should, you know, delete the application if that's, if that's something that we can do.
I would recommend that the board vote to deny the application
Exactly.
without prejudice, so that she can reapply in the future if she would still like.
Yeah.
Can I question, Jason? Is, I, I agree with what you're saying, but my question is, she has to reapply and go through this process again. There's no way we could put this application on hold, and rightfully so. I think that we've given her plenty of opportunity. I just.
I think this board has given, this board and Gabby and myself have given her many opportunities to participate meaningfully in this application, in this variance application. And I have told her that this board and the town board has granted applications for mobile homes outside of mobile home parks. Maybe five times in the past ten years. So I encouraged her to complete the process and see where the board wanted to go, and she has clearly chosen not to participate. So I think the town has done everything it can do.
I agree. Thank you.
Steve, what do you think?
My thought is, is she avoiding this process altogether and going to move forward with?
Such as what you said, based upon what the manufacturer told her, the New York State law.
Based upon when she came in at the first meeting and she basically told us what she was going to do and that what she didn't need.
Good point.
That's my, that's my feeling, but as being new, I don't know if she'll run into roadblocks down the road without us. That's, that's just my question.
Well, yeah, she will. The next door neighbor is James Quigley the third. That's his property. So I don't think he's going to enjoy seeing something just shoved up there after.
Yeah, she'd also have to apply for a building permit, which would be denied without the variance.
Right. I, I was going to, that was my point, is she wouldn't be able to get a building permit, and even if she started doing anything without any permits, I mean, I would think Warren would be in there right, right away to say, I'm sorry, you can't continue.
Yeah.
Big red sticker.
Talk to the hand.
I'd like to make a motion, we deny this without prejudice.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Gabby, go for the vote.
We've had some wonky storms. My internet's been going on and off like crazy.
Mine too.
Either thunderclap in back of your house, because I lost power too, for a brief second. We threw all my servers in.
Yeah, we had a few blinky, blinky blinkies.
I think I may have been.
Puppy doesn't know what to do about it, so she barks at it.
Okay, yes, we've got, we've got a motion to deny
Yeah.
without prejudice. So could you also vote?
Okay.
Yes, and I seconded it, Gabby.
I thought I seconded, okay.
No, you made the motion.
Yeah, yeah, that happens. You get old once in a while.
Did, I don't know if I got her answer, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Sticking with my tradition of asking us to explain the vote, I don't give up. We've given her plenty of opportunity to address us, and she hasn't. So it's, it's denial. Yes, we're going to deny this.
I like your background, Lois.
Oh, I did that in honor of the solar eclipse tomorrow, Mr. Reggino. Thank you, Kevin.
And we can't see it.
Having five twenty AM.
Yeah. I'm going to have to watch it on video.
There you go. I'll videotape that for you.
I'll be up.
Yeah, I'll watch it. Okay. When we go into public hearing for Christian Artist, Z four oh five, two forty seven City View Terrace. I make a motion, we go into a public hearing for him.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Smith, Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. All right, Gab, could you just read, is he here?
Yeah.
Okay, hello.
Hello.
Mr. Artist?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Did you just go over your proposal again, Christian?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Shed, six feet from the line. This feels a lot like deja vu, but I'll do it again. I had a really great drawing last time. For those of you who were not with us, you're missing out for real. Right away.
It's hanging in the town library.
Yes, you should, you should definitely put that up there somewhere. Again, it's a shed, it's fourteen by eight, it's, it's about six feet from the property line, which is also a right of way. There's trees in, in between there. It's kind of nice. The, the right of way goes into undeveloped land. The neighbors don't have a problem with it. So here we are. Yes.
You did very well.
See, that's a good move. It's like a Picasso.
That's because we, we type all day now, so there's no. I can't even tell you how to do cursing.
Okay.
Um. I did receive a phone call from the neighbor on that side, and they said they have no issues with it.
They have no issues? Okay.
Thank you, Gabby.
No issue.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak for or against this variance?
No.
All right, well, I motion we come out of the public hearing for discussion.
Second. Close the public hearing?
Yes. We're going to come out of public hearing and go to discussion.
I'll make the motion.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Can we have a vote?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
I, I, a point of order, I would really like to commend the high tech presentation. I, I, and, and I, I, I agree, and it's really our bad for not having it right there. So thank you. It's, it's awesome.
Yeah. I figured everybody would want to share in the glory.
No, don't kid yourself. It's good.
I love his sense of humor on top of it all.
Yeah.
You should see some, I've seen listing, I sell real estate, I've seen listings for brand new houses with your stick figure things for what the proposed house looks like. So trust me, I, this is, this is high tech. Thank you. An employment opportunity for him.
Seen much worse.
Okay.
I'll bet you have, Gabby, I'll bet you've seen.
What do you guys think about, guys, what do you think about this? Any questions? What do you feel? I mean, personally, I, I have no problem with it. We went through this before.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
I'm satisfied with it also, with what we discussed on the last meeting.
Yeah. Lois, what do you think?
Um, I can, I'm having a hard time here, and I apologize. I don't know if it's my internet right now, but. Because you're so far out in the universe. Isn't it cool? He was going to put the little dog on the bottom for you, but I said, no, that would be on top.
Lois, what do you think about this? You want any questions about it?
Andy got me in trouble this time. No, I have no questions, sir. None. He did a fantastic job. I think he explained it cut and dry to all of us. The neighbors don't have a problem with it. I, I don't think I have any questions for this. He did a fantastic job. I think he explained it cut and dry to all of us. The neighbors don't have a problem with it. I, I don't think I have any questions for this.
What do you think?
I'm good with it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, we approve this variance.
Fantastic.
But.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Call the roll, Gabby. I made the motion. Kevin made the second.
We lost her.
I think she's muted.
Again.
You made the Chairman Porter, did you make the motion?
Yes, I made the motion a second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
And second by Kevin. Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
So that's it.
That's it? All right, fantastic. Thanks, everyone. I'm really going to miss.
Thank you. Great presentation, by the way. Very professional, really great.
Thank you, Lois.
You're welcome.
You guys, thanks so much. It was fun.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
It was fun. He was fun, right? Like the zoning board is ever fun. Come on. He's young. He's young.
I'm going to make a motion that we go into a public hearing for Jason Howick, Z four oh six, one eighteen John Street, dealing with a variance for his fence.
So moved.
Roll call? Just call, yes.
I'm sorry, I had Chairman Porter open who seconded.
I did, Andy.
Andy. Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
We can take.
Ms. Turkleven?
Same too.
I'm a little confused, Sharon.
Sorry, it sounds like
Do we have?
Charlie Brown teacher.
I said yes.
Okay.
Andy's a second. Okay, Mr. Reggino?
Yes. Yes, I don't know if you heard that.
I, I think she's losing us back and forth. There may be a breakup with her.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
I apologize, my service is horrible because of the weather.
Right.
Can't be perfect all the time, Gabby.
I'd like, hello, Jason. I think we're losing Gabby on some atmospheric issue.
No problem.
Okay, um, I can call the call the votes. That's fine.
Did you, you guys didn't hear me for the public hearing?
No, we didn't hear you.
I apologize.
My vote's yes, by the way.
Okay, so I have the approval. Um, I have Chairman Porter motion, Kevin seconded, roll call vote, and then to open the public hearing, I have Chairman Porter opens, Kevin seconds, and another roll call vote.
Correct.
Did I get it? Did I miss anything?
Sounds right.
It's close enough.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Howick?
Yes.
Thumbnail sketch of what we talked about, so we go on record.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Give us thumbnail sketch of what you're going to do, so we can be on record.
Oh, I'm trying to get a variance for a ten foot off of Adda Street for a six foot fence.
Okay.
Want me to go more? I don't know.
We'll be.
I'm not good at these things. I don't know what else you.
So you do, you're fine.
All right.
We'll ask you questions as it goes, so we'll help.
Okay.
Again, put up that piece up.
There we go.
So we see what we're doing here.
Yeah.
All right. And this is a fence going all the way across Adda Street, correct? Including that ten. Did, by the way, did you get that properties, and you have a bill of sale for it?
Not yet. I don't know what's going on. He didn't talk to the lawyer. I tried to get him to do it today before we talked to you guys, and, uh, he said he was going to try and get on to the meeting here, and he didn't do either one, so I don't know. I don't know what to tell you.
Is that your lawyer you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, it's Cliff's lawyer. Yeah.
Oh, okay. We know a great lawyer.
Might have to, if he doesn't get back to us soon, but.
Uh, Jason, how's, how's that going to affect this going forward, since we, the part of the property that he has there is included in this variance? And he doesn't have, probably doesn't have ownership of it as of, as of tonight.
So this is one eighteen John Street, correct?
Correct.
And, um, let me just look up the map here. Who's the owner right now?
Cliff Cole.
He's the owner?
Cliff Cole. He, he owns the ten foot by one hundred foot. It's off Adda Street, actually. It's ten foot by a hundred. It runs along my property there. If you look at the thing I drew there.
Oh, okay, he owns, uh, the unimproved portion of Adda Street?
Uh, yeah, he owns a few pieces over there on Adda Street, a couple of pieces.
Oh, I'm seeing it now. Okay, it's a little strip of land.
Yes.
Yes, a tiny sliver.
Yes, you're right. He does own that. Is he consenting to you putting the fence on that property?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, but we're supposed to be getting it signed over to me, so I can own the piece of property. But, uh, I don't know what's going on with the lawyer. I don't know what to say to you, because I, I tried getting that information before I got on here for the last, this week, I tried getting that information, but he's in the process of going on vacation this week, and you know, so I don't know. Whatever you guys want me to do, I guess that's what I got to do, so.
Bob, do we open the public hearing?
Yes, we did.
We did. Good. Jason, do you think we can get this done by next month?
I, I was hoping to have it done by now. I'm hoping so. I'm going to say something to him. If his lawyer doesn't do something, then maybe we should get another lawyer. That's, that's.
We know a great lawyer.
We could do, that means we could do a continuation.
Yeah, I, I would say, let's do this the right way, and we can adjourn the public hearing to July.
Ooh, yeah, yeah, take that off of there, if that's what we got to do. I'll, I'll just say, forget it. He didn't get it done, then we're done. You know, I'm not waiting any longer.
It, it, it's only thirty days, Jason.
I know, but it's, it's already been thirty days, and he hasn't done it yet. So if, if I don't get the property, it doesn't really matter to me. It's not a big deal. So you can just take that off of this, and I'll redo it if I do get the property, and if not, then I'm just going to put this fence straight down the property. Because I'm tired of dealing with it, honestly. I didn't think it was going to take this long to get this done.
It's, it's your, it's your decision, sir.
Yeah, if you have to take it off, then take it off. I don't want to wait another month. That's, I've been waiting so long already. I just got to get this done.
Well, it, it's your, your prerogative. We're willing to work with you on this any way you want to, but thirty days for you to achieve your goals, to me, doesn't seem too outlandish.
Well, I just, I, it's, it's been going on for sixty some days now, and I don't want to wait any longer, you know? But I, I, I just, I don't know. I don't know what to say right now, because I'm kind of upset he didn't get ahold of the lawyer and do what he was supposed to do, but. But like I said, let's just take it off. We'll go that way, I guess, so.
Or I guess you can always reapply.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you can reapply. We're happy. I think the board's happy to hold it open for another month. It's.
Yeah, can I get the, can I get the approval on the rest of the, the job and not do that section for now until that's approved, or can that happen, so I can at least start doing what I need to do?
Well, we'd have to do an amendment on your application.
We got you.
Okay, I, I'm not sure if we can do that on the fly. I think we probably can. I'm, I'm not quite sure, Jason.
Well, if you're proposing to amend it by cutting the
the ten feet.
variance, then, yeah, I think that's, that's fair.
Yeah, we could do that. We'll, we can amend it on the fly, cutting a ten feet off and going with the property boundaries. Is that approved to you, Mr. Howick?
And what do you want to do? I'm, I'm, I'm misunderstanding it. I'm sorry.
We're giving you what you want. Okay, you said you didn't want to move ahead, so what we have to do is amend this to your original property lines.
Okay, got you.
Home today.
Yeah.
This deal comes through, you know, you can come back and, and, and we'll gladly work with you again. You see, we're not.
Okay, right, got you.
Pangs and.
Right. Let's, yeah, let's do that, because I want to be able to start the whole thing. So that'd be awesome if we could do that.
Well, I'm at a loss for words for once. Everybody mark your calendars. On how to word this. Hey, what's, what's the rest, what does the rest of the board feel?
I, I'd like to hear if the public, if anybody in the public, uh, because this is a public rate, we're in the public.
Yeah. Well, so, is there somebody that would like to speak? I do know Gabby's been in communication with his neighbors. I don't know if there's neighbors or people on property around there.
And they did. Heard the email, from what I'm seeing, it's, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Chivone, excuse me if I pronounced it wrong, and they seem to be online with us, so, uh, they have anything they'd like to to say, I'd like to hear it.
Well, they are online. I, I can't see who's here or not.
This is Tammy Chivone. I'm talking for Joseph Chivone. He's not able to get on. But he was up there, and he noticed that the stake was moved. He would like the property surveyed, because the stake was moved, and before he puts that fence up, he wants to make sure it's not on his property.
Can I, can I ask what stake was moved?
The front one in the driveway.
The one in the driveway? When did I move this? Because I, I've never touched any of them, so I would like to know when I moved it.
Did you hear him, Joey?
I touched the middle of the driveway.
He said.
When did I move the stake? I don't understand it, because I, I want to know who told you I moved the stake, because it'd make no sense to move the stake if I paid to have it surveyed. Makes no sense. Who said I moved the stake?
He said. Who said it was moved, Joey?
There was three people that.
Three immediate people that live on that block told Joey.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense to go out in front of everybody and do it. I, I should have invited about ten people out to do it.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Jason. You did say something I thought was curious just now. Do you have a survey of your property?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Is this a current survey? It's a current survey.
It's, it's quite, it's not quite a few years ago. I'd say within the last probably seven, seven years.
Was it filed with the Ulster County Clerk's Office?
Yes, it was.
Awesome.
Now, is this fence matching that survey?
It should. I've never touched it unless somebody else did.
Yeah, okay, just want to clarify, you have a survey, so that's excellent.
There's also a, another trick you might be able to do, since you do have a survey from the Ulster County, and it was certified by the Ulster County Clerk's Office.
Um, it doesn't have to be.
What was that? If you go on to the Ulster County website, and you go on to their Ulster County parcel viewer, there's a base map, map layers, measurements, and coordinates on that map. You'll find that interactive map of your parcel, my parcel, everybody's parcel, and you can measure your distance if you have the other corner markers, if you're positive. But you have to be positive which marker is there. You could use your cell phone for the coordinates, but that map, the measurements and coordinates is a wonderful handy tool, so you do not have to pay. I, I'm not giving you legal advice. Please don't take it as such. I'm just giving you a suggest. If you're positive of the other markers, you could measure from those markers and use that interactive map.
Problem is, only a licensed land surveyor can certify that the marker is where it's supposed to be. The. The parcel viewer is a wonderful tool. The problem is that the tax map. Is a photograph of a hologram of a fax of an overlay, so they are not that accurate.
Well.
Especially when you're trying to measure using the measurement tool. You could be off by three.
Survey map should say like southwest so many feet, so many degrees. And on your phone, you have an app. It says southwest so many feet, so many degrees. You have to be standing. That's accurate. Um, I had to do this because somebody from the town had taught me this.
All right, let's wrap this into some, Jason, go ahead. Look if you wanna say something.
Yeah, um, you know, Bob, I think that we need to see the survey.
Okay.
Before this board can. Take any action. Um, so I would suggest we um. You know, hear any of the comments from the public and if there are none. Um, we adjourn the public hearing until July.
Are you looking for a motion to request the owner to provide a current survey? I mean. If you have a survey, sir, and it's really older, it really doesn't take a lot to have it just remarked. It's not like going in and having a new survey.
Yeah, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per pin. I already had them back here a couple of years ago to put in a couple of middle pins and stuff.
I, I don't.
Back in the driveway next door to it was blacktops, so I, I. Why don't he pay that if he's unsure?
Jason.
Sorry.
I don't think we even. Do not need to have the survey recertified if it's. Relatively recent by a low licensed land surveyor. I can look at it between now and July. Give it toward my opinion, give the applicant my opinion. We can go, we can go forward. I, I don't wanna make him incur. A two thousand dollar expense to get a new survey if it's really not needed.
That, that was my point and especially if you're trying to get a surveyor right now, you're looking at a three-month backlog. So that was my point before I was quite rudely interrupted.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm just don't understand why the guy didn't come and talk to me about this.
Well, this is why we have a public hearing so we get all the information out there. Everybody can hear everything. We like to hear everything as well. You have to understand, we're for you. We're also for the, the people of the town of Ulster, so we gotta cover every base we possibly.
Saying, I did everything right. I got my land surveyed so I can fence in my yard.
You may also wanna reconsider one other thing. Since we're pushing this into July anyway, right? Oh, maybe I'm not even gonna say this because you're gonna.
Put the other piece back on there.
Right?
If we gotta push it into July anyway, might as well.
Uh, I just, man, I don't wanna complicate a com- a complicated issue when it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be complicated anyway, but.
It happens.
I guess.
Uh, everybody hear what I just said?
I did. I think Jason made a great suggestion.
He didn't wanna wait the thirty days to begin with, so he moved ahead to say, okay, we'll go with the original. Map, right? Not the extra ten feet. But now we gotta wait thirty, the man has to wait thirty days again anyway. We might as well go with his original request then.
Please.
Complicate this. I, seriously, I have a way of complicating things, but I'm doing my best.
We're all trying to help you. It's the bottom line here. We're all trying to help you.
Oh, I understand. I, I just, I don't know. I just found out about him complaining thirty hours ago, so I'm just a little upset.
Oh, it's okay. We, we're working on it. You got a survey map.
The people that talk to him are liars and that's okay.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's, let's be happy here.
Uh, it's hard to be happy.
We have enough brief this past year for all of us, so build that. Okay, it's all right. We're gonna work through this. We'll get through it.
Yeah, we will.
They're not gonna go away, so.
All right, we'll get through it. You're right.
We'll get through it. We'll just get through it. So, Mr. Kovacs, I need your assistance on how to word what I wanna say. And Andy, I think you're, did you hear what I was saying, Andy? Now, you have to wait anyway that extra thirty days. Maybe we can go back to his original request then and include that ten extra feet.
I think that's very, very fair.
Okay.
I think you want, do you wanna make the motion just according to um, our terms?
I would simply.
Send?
Someone to file, uh, make a motion to adjourn this public hearing to the July meeting.
Anything, yes. So nothing's in concrete, right? So his original application stands, correct?
Yes.
So we have no changes. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this public hearing until July. We'll pick it back up again.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Golevin?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultes?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
I'd like to say yes, but we have to see that survey map and Jason has to be satisfied that all of the questions we raised here. Are answered, that this will be okay to do.
All right, who do I, who do I give the map to?
You can give it to Gabby and she can give it to Gabby.
And I'll distribute it.
Okay.
So we're working with you, pal. It's okay. We'll, we'll work through this, all right?
I got you.
Gives you a little more time to keep that money in your pocket before you spend on those vinyl fences.
Mr. Chairman.
Hi.
Ask him one more question before he goes away.
It's your quarter.
Is the mapping your name, the survey map filed under your name?
Yeah, I believe it's me and my wife's name, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
All right, um.
Yeah, when I looked, I couldn't find it, so if he could provide it, that'd be good. I was trying to bring it up, but I couldn't.
Else I asked.
All right, everybody, that finishes our public hearing section. Do I need to get a motion? We just, we haven't even, and, and the public hearing section. And enter into preliminary. Motion, we get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Golevin?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultes?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. Good job, gang. Good job. Now, just so let you know, I'm gonna switch hats right now as part of a ongoing training. And Kevin's gonna take over the chairmanship. I'm resigning to chairmanship, see as well. We all know we can't make every meeting, so the man hasn't run one. It's fair to let him give a shot, right? Even you learn as you go.
I think you did a great job.
Who did?
Yeah, I think you did a wonderful job as our chairman.
He's not going anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere.
So.
This is for his benefit to be able to be, learn how to run a meeting.
Oh, I just, you just said that you were switching hats. I'm, I'm thinking like. Crown.
Let me clarify this one more time. This will be part of the educational process for Kevin. That he'll have a chance to chair the preliminary section of the meeting. I'm gonna sit in the back row and enjoy myself with a soda. And you know, every, you know, you have vice chairman who's never run a meeting, why? It doesn't make sense to me. So this will be good training for him and also all the rest of you guys, if you wanna have a shot at it. I have no problem. I don't wanna be chairman this year. I'm working my way out of a job, gang.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
I turn over my scepter to you and I'm gonna sit in the back row and just, you know, play.
All right, relax, enjoy the show.
Yeah, wait for the puck to drop down and uh.
Hey, so um, we'd like to start the preliminary hearings. Uh, do we need to make a motion to begin that? Okay, so the preliminary hearing, first one on the uh, agenda is Mr. Longendike. That's Z four oh seven. Uh, Mr. Longendike is looking for an area variance to allow six-foot fence within the front setbacks. Uh, twenty-four feet from Catskill Avenue. I'm Swongendike. Uh, thanks for joining us. And uh, if you can describe your, your, your project and, and update us on, on what you're looking for.
Okay, first of all, um, the house is on Catskill. I have a corner lot. The twenty-four-foot setback is actually from Maryland Avenue. Okay, I am. In March, I applied for a building permit. Uh, April first, I was given the building permit to put the fence up. I started putting the fence up and then I got a stop work order. Um, I'm. Twenty-four feet from the road, um, I'm in line with the house. Um, thought I was doing everything the right way. Submitted the building permit, the whole nine yards, um. And I guess I'm a foot shy of what I need to be for. For uh, my setback.
Thank you. So we were uh, one foot shy.
Uh, I, six feet.
Six feet shy.
On town road is twenty-five feet.
Thirty feet front setback.
I don't see that. I didn't find that in the town code. I, I saw the thirty-foot setback for. State and county roads, but twenty-five for town.
That's town right-of-way. That uh, we're talking front setback. Our fence code states nothing over four feet in the front setback, which is thirty feet. So we're not talking about the fence being in the right-of-way. Talking about the fence being over height in the front setback.
Okay, so then I'm six feet.
Okay.
Um, you know, every neighbor around me has fences, same height or closer to the roads. Uh, and like I said, I did, I'm a building inspector in town of Five Park, so I kinda know the. The way to do this, so I thought I was doing everything the right way. And like I said, I applied for the permit in the middle of uh. March and April first, I was granted the permit, so I started putting the fence up. So I thought I had the approval.
Is it from setback from the curb or from the center of the room?
Curb. Curb. I, I submitted pictures that show from both the corners of Catskill and from Gulf Terrace that. Uh, you can't even see the fence from um. From the corner, so it's not blocking the view of any traffic, um. Like I said, it's in, you can see where it is. It's right in line with the house going to the back property line.
Did you say there's an existing fence that runs along the back of it already?
Well, I put the fence up along the back property line.
Okay.
Um, so, and this is just, and I also did. There's a fence that goes along about a foot off the property line in the back. And then, and the driveway side. Um, off of Catskill Avenue, from where you see the deck to the property line, I ran a section of fence there. Um, from the, from Catskill Avenue to the fence, you can park three cars off the street, so I got plenty of setback there. So, the only thing that was in question, I have two sections of fence up along Maryland Avenue. And I was, then I got the stop work order.
How tall is the fence, sir?
Uh, it's six foot total. It's a five-foot fence with a one-foot lattice on top.
Nice, sorry.
It's a vinyl fence.
Whoa, very pretty. Andy, did you hear that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I said, I, I. I waited to order the fence until I got the permit to make sure that I had the approvals and uh, I went out and I ordered the fence and. So. Like I said, I was issued, I was issued the permit, so I didn't think there was any problems.
Well, um, sometimes the codes for different towns, uh. Town of Ulster, we need to, to do the zoning for the six-foot fence.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is that the, you know, I was given a permit. So if I knew I had to do a, a public hearing or for the variance or whatever, I would have done it, but uh. Once I was given a permit, I kinda figured that we had the, the approvals. So I went ahead and put the, the, started putting the fence up.
No, no one wants to ask why the permit was issued in the first place? I know somebody does.
Issued in the first place?
I did not issue the permit. The permit was issued from my office in error. I have since informed the individual who issued the permit about the code that he forgot to look up.
Okay.
Because we're all.
I have no problem with that. I've just. I'm just looking for my variance so I can finish my fence and get my landscaping done. We just bought the house in December. We just wanted to look nice. We want the dog to be able to run in the backyard. So I'm just looking for my approval so I can continue on with my fence. As I've. None of the neighbors have spoken to my wife or to myself about any problems with the fence. I don't know if any of them do, but none of them have spoken, you know, said anything about it to us.
So does anybody else have any other questions about Mr. Longendike's fence?
I, I'll have some questions for him. It's okay. So, Mr. Longendike. Um, you said that the other neighbors have similar fence, similar heights, similar. The continuity of your fence.
Um, well, like on, on Catskill Avenue on the corner of Catskill and um, Court Street. There's a six-foot high fence right on the corner. Um, it's about four feet off of Catskill and about six feet off of Maryland or I'm off of um, Court Street.
Court Avenue?
Court Avenue, yes. And then across from that, um, neighbor right across from us on Catskill. They have a five-foot high fence up, which is less than two feet off the road. It goes around there in ground pool. And my neighbor across Maryland has a similar situation to me from the corner of his house. To the back, he ran his vinyl fence. Um, he's, I didn't measure it, but um, looking at it right now, he's. Probably not even twenty feet from the road, so I, I didn't think I was doing anything wrong. Like I said, I, I had the permit. I saw, you know, the properties around me, so. I didn't realize I was doing anything wrong. If I did, I would have got the approvals in the beginning. If I knew this was the process, I would have my first meeting in April. My second meeting in May and I would be, I would be done by now, so I just uh. Would like to get my approval so I can just finish my fence and my landscaping and. Enjoy the property that we just bought.
Think, I think we understand that, Mr. Longendike. Um, we, we are still gonna have to go to a public hearing next month. So it will take another thirty days uh. Before we can grant you the final approval.
I do have one question, Mr. Chairman, to ask Richard. Richard, I'm looking at a picture right now.
Yeah.
And it shows a white fence in the back, right? Now that's where you would be going to, isn't it?
Yes, the white fence along the backyard I put up. It's um.
Okay.
For the building permit that I received, so.
All right.
And that, that fence is about a foot off the property line in back.
So you're asking for a variance because there's really no other place you can put that fence?
Well.
Right? Unless you go, unless you go into your house. Correct?
Yeah, you know, and.
You know, there's gotta be a reason to give a variance and it has to be a hardship. So I'm asked, so I'm looking at this and I'm looking at it and uh, if we follow the code, we'd basically be cutting through your bushes.
No, no, there's no bushes there at all.
Well, whatever's at the base of your house. I'm looking at a tiny picture sideways.
Uh, yeah, if, if I move the fence six feet in, I would be going through the middle of my landscaping, yes.
That's what I was saying, the bushes. I don't know what you have. You could have hydrangeas for all I know. That you'd be in your, okay. So I'm just trying to establish, that's a hardship in your case. You are familiar with that concept being a building inspector?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, all right, you know, I'm coming from. Okay, well, that seems pretty good.
Plus, uh, I also just hooked up to the town sewer. Uh, in this area and um, one of my fence posts may be right on top of the tank.
We'll tell that Warren will be there tomorrow.
So, well, Vinnie.
I'm me, Vinnie.
Vinnie, no, don't tell Vinnie. No, Vinnie did a great job.
He is great, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, unless there's more discussion, I'd like to make a recommendation. We move this to public hearing.
Do we have a second? Okay, take a vote.
I apologize, the second cut out.
It was me, Gabby, Steve.
Okay.
And as you can see, this survey that you have up here on the screen, this was done the beginning of December, so this is a, it's a new map.
Looks good.
Yes, Gabby, I'm listening to both of you. I'm sorry. Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, move the, to public hearing, yes.
Mr. Golevin?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultes?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
So can I ask Warren a question before he leaves us, this gentleman?
Sure.
If not, I can always ask Jason. Jason, um since the man or this gentleman already started building his fence. And it's the front setback that is the concern.
Yes.
It is he able to continue to build the other three sides or since he's not over eight feet, unless I missed that part, I'm sorry. Is he able to?
If he has a building permit and no variance is required, then he can do whatever he needs to do on the property.
So pretty much his building permit is on hold and voided, correct? I mean, just so that he's clear and we're clear and there's.
You know, I I don't know what building permit he has, what or what Warren issued um.
Warren didn't issue.
Yeah, he 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 does have a stop worker. I in in the interest of carrying things forward, I do not have a problem with him installing all the fence. That is code compliant, and he can finish the last section as soon as the variance is granted.
There you go.
Thank you.
I don't know what that means.
Any of the fence that would be code compliant can be installed. So the remainder of the fence across the back and anywhere elsewhere that he wanted to install can be installed.
So he does have some parts of the property which is code compliant?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Just the one, just the one section parallel to Marilena.
Ah, all right, gotcha. Thank you.
It's it's something, right? I mean. We're trying here, sir.
Have a party when it's done. Look at, we're gonna finish this thing. Have friends over, have a finishing party.
Okay, I think we're all set, right? Mr. Long and Dyke, thank you. Uh Gabrielle will send you the information for the next meeting for the public hearing. We'll see you then.
Okay, we're all done.
We're all done.
All right, thank you.
He just moved here. That's awesome.
Well, he worked in the city of Kingston.
Purchased the house, though. That's what I meant by welcome, like the welcome.
Well, he he was resident in the city of Kingston.
Yeah, he looked very familiar, but um yeah, anyway. Thank you for answering my questions, Jason and Warren.
Okay, um next on the list, we have Moon Burger Z four oh eight. That's at Five Powell Lane in Kingston. Um they're looking for an area variance to allow a ninety-nine point seven five square foot wall sign. Which is a hundred and fifty-five percent of the variance requested. Mr. Robinson Leon is is are you representative of Moon Burger?
I am. Thank you so much. So Silas, hi, I'm Jeremy Robinson Leon. Um uh thank you to uh Acting Chairman Reggino and Chairman Porter and the board and. Um Warren, and especially Gabby for being incredibly patient with me throughout this process. Um just quick background, uh I um. This is the ice cream castle that you're looking at here between the two quick tricks uh by the circle in Kingston. Um I had uh for the last five or six years, I driven by it all the time and I had um fantasized about what. What it could perhaps one day be, and it was sort of on and off the market. Um I finally had an idea uh last year and um and I just closed. On uh on the real estate about two weeks ago.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um it is uh it is entirely um. A uh a labor of love, pouring everything uh that I can into it. Um it is just a an independent operation. Um uh by me with a help uh and and guidance from um from friends uh who are. Who are much smarter in various um operational components of this than I am. So what we're gonna do is um. Is do uh burgers, fries and shakes and uh create a really um I I I I. I certainly hope a really terrific product um and and a really great experience. And provide something a little bit different for the community in a place that I think will. Um help to enliven that area where the uh where the castle currently sits. Um what you see here is um is the design that. Um of friends uh uh did for me very generously, which is essentially reciting most of the building and then. Taking off the castle motif. Um if you passed it in the last couple of days, you've seen uh. The the demo happening there now, and essentially what you see on the front is our full walls. Um which are white corrugated, which I think are gonna look um really both classic and modern at the same time to kind of evoke the nostalgia of the classic. Roadside burger uh stand, um but but also in a really modern way. And um I went before the uh the planning board last month and got their approval for the site plan. Uh and so I'm excited to be off to the races. What I'm asking uh for you today for your consideration is a variance for the um for the sign size. Uh you can see on the front, it it the the piece in question, the variance is on that. Front facade which on the far left there and essentially it's that Moon Burger logo, channel letter. Um and then the drive-through piece above it. Um and I'll just point out that it looks large here. It is a very tiny building. Um and so although it looks large in relation, the absolute size of the sign is um will not be all that big. It's. If I recall sixteen or eighteen feet, the Moon Burger. Um and then the square footage. Goes up dramatically because the M and the G are significantly taller and lower than the rest of the words. Um so and and what's our one final thing I'll just say is um the the reason that I'm asking for this is. Uh because I'm between these two very large, bright, quick check gas stations, and I'm a little tiny building that's setback. Um you know, uh a couple hundred feet from Washington. Um I kind of need all the help that I can get in terms of visibility. Um and because it is a very small building, and we're gonna be drive-through um only um given the. Layout of the space and the size of the parking lot, and so that's the reason that the drive-through sign, I think, is particularly important to help drive business. So anyway, sorry, sorry for uh all the information, but thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Jeremy. So we also had a recommendation from the planning board, I believe. Gabrielle, would you know, would you have that?
Yes, they did recommend that the zoning board approve the variance because of the location and size.
Thank you.
Just to clarify on the percentage increase, it's actually two hundred and twelve. In that district, you're allowed to, you in that district, you're allowed two square feet for every linear foot, and on that side of the building is sixteen feet. And he needs to increase it by sixty-eight to get to the hundred feet. So that's just a, that's just a procedural thing we can put in when we actually grant the variance, or we can just grant the variance for a hundred-foot sign.
Jeremy, what what's the, what's what kind of signs? Was it LED sign? What what what's the?
So uh uh so the 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 Moon Burger is gonna be um yes, a lit channel that with ch- channel letter with um. Uh LEDs, you know, within the within the cans there. Um and then the um. The 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 drive-through sign above would just be a um uh like a. An aluminum or or plastic, you know, dimensional, but very simple and not not backlit or anything like that. And and and, you know, I would love to be able to do it all and be fancier, but you know, it just comes down to to budget.
I can understand.
Jeremy, are you including the drive-through and the Moon Burger in your signed square footage calculations? Are you including both both of those?
That that was, that was the intention and um uh Gabby and I did the calculation together, so my apologies if if any of that is off.
So the two, the two, the two combined are a hundred square feet, the drive-through and the Moon Burger? If you take the square footage of the drive-through as a rectangle and then skew the Moon Burger as a rectangle. You add those two square footages together, is that the ninety-nine point seven five square feet?
Uh I I.
A hundred?
I I believe so. Does that sound right, uh Gabby?
I honestly would have to break out a calculator to to do it.
Well, if we go with that, then it's less of, it's even, it's lesser of a variance.
That be considered two signs?
Yeah, yeah. We would break that into two signs. If it was one right underneath the other, we could take the whole square footage of the entire overlay.
Yep, so um uh I just did a very quick, um and it's it's roughly seventy-two is the. So the balance was. Um yes.
Or both combined?
Is the ninety-nine figure.
So the Moon Burger is seventy-two?
Yep, and then the other, sorry, I'm just.
So then the other one would be uh twenty-eight roughly?
Exactly.
Yeah, seventy-one point two five for the Moon Burger.
And then it was two, two by fourteen was the other one, so for twenty-eight.
All right, so we're at the two a hundred square feet, so actually it's a hundred percent var- but one hundred percent variance. You're just doubling the size. So that I feel better with that.
That's good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the question of council.
Okay.
Jason, do we need to put this through the county because it's proximity to Sawkill Road?
Yes, I had this conversation with Gabby today, and I think we need to refer it to the county.
Thank you.
Can I ask what the um what the process is for, for that, would that go before a meeting that they would? Older, is that just uh or do they provide input?
I think um Gabby would be the best person to explain that. Um but if we go before the county planning board, they would make a recommendation. And they would refer it back to to this board, and this board would be able to vote with the comments of the county in consideration.
Continue to bring it to a public hearing, or will we have to wait until the county uh made a decision?
No, I think we can schedule a public hearing and hopefully we will have the comments by our public hearing.
Yes.
I I think they rearranged these meetings so we could do that, because previously we'd miss a week, we'd miss another month. Now that would require a super majority, correct? So if we had three people here, all three would have to be in unison. Uh be like a majority plus one, correct?
Only if you want to override county.
We've been traditionally doing that. I just figured, what the heck, save us a step.
Do we have any other questions?
I have one for Jason, actually, since it's on the corner, Jay. It's since it's on the corner, he's in in Sawkill Road is. A county or state road, isn't that, is that technically considered Washington Avenue? This building is on the corner of Washington. And so would that require two variances or just the one?
Just the one. No, just the one.
I'd like to make a motion that we move this to public hearing.
I'll second that. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
That was different.
That was a flashback from the seventies. Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chair or Mr. Schultz?
Yes. Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
All right, Jeremy, uh your next step is gonna be to get ahold of Gabrielle, and she will lead you, guide you to the county. Um and we'll be back next month in thirty days for a public hearing.
I actually do everything, so nothing needs to be done. Once I get the comments back, I'll send it out.
And I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I'm looking forward to some Moon Burgers.
Fantastic. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it, and I hope that y'all all come by. I'm I I I'm venturing to be open um by uh the end of August, so. Thank you all so much.
Great job. Presentation too was was not too much. It was perfect, and you did a great job, and. Hopefully, everything will go well. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you so much. All right, take care. Bye-bye.
That's nice. Okay, um next on the list, we have Mr. Kevin Flood, Z four oh nine from Five Arnold Drive in Kingston. Uh Mr. Flood is looking for an area variance to allow a six-foot fence within the front setback, uh five feet from Hillside Terrace. Mr. Flood, thank you for your patience. Um if you could describe your uh your project and and we'll move forward.
Well, it's not as cool as the Moon Burger or that dog. I don't know what kind that is, but uh I. I I live at Five Arnold Drive. I border Hillside Terrace. Um the front of our house. Is got plenty of room. Um I I would think seventy-five, eighty feet. The right side of my house is um I think sixty feet off of Arnold is a paved driveway. So my entrance and exit is off of Hillside Terrace. Uh we have a pool in the backyard. And I have beautiful spruce trees that are probably twenty feet high, and they've been there longer than I've owned the house. And for some reason, the deer have eaten the bottom of all of them this year, based on the winter. Uh so no matter what my efforts are, it now feels like we're living on the road when we're swimming in the pool. So what we propose to do is just put um a a solid brown colored vinyl fence. Five feet off the road, uh just to give us a little privacy, leaving the rest of the fence that's around the yard. Um that's all see-through. And um that's, that's about it. I I do know. You know, I have friends Danny Longo who lives on uh Hillside Terrace, and I think it's Hilltop. It's the bottom of, it's the bottom of Pearl. And their neighbors, they have fences on the road. Uh up on Norma Court, there's a bunch of wooden fences on the road. Uh most of my neighbors, Arnold Drive, a couple of the people that own Dallas. Six-foot vinyl fences on the road, but only in the backyard, very similar to what I'm doing. But if you go down to the intersection going up to, I think they call it Kingston Heights, but the intersection of Hillside Terrace. And um. I lived here all my, most of my life, and I can't remember the name of the road. When you come down Pearl Street, it changes. I think it's Lynette Drive. Right on the corner.
Lynette Boulevard.
Lynette Boulevard. Yeah, so right on the corner, they have a white fence, and Danny Long goes on the other side with post and rail on the road. Um you know, we're gonna do it tastefully if we're allowed to do it, and alls I'm looking for is low privacy, so the pool's not on the road. And I really didn't wanna cut down the trees, but they're. As I look at them, they're eating about four, four and a half feet right now from the base. Um so I figured if the setback was right, the trees would continue to grow because they get plenty of sun. They're on the south side. And it would match what a lot of people do in the neighborhood. And that's about it. I did have, I met Jimmy Bruno, nice man. He came by two or three weeks ago. Um he walked the property. Uh if I did come on the offset, I'd be in the middle of our pool, so I guess to use your words, Chairman Porter. There is a bit of a hardship because I'd have to move a pool that's been here since they built the house in nineteen eighty. So that's a little bit of a problem for me, and I'm just trying to, you know, work with the town first before I order the fence. I've got a couple of nice pictures of what I want to order. Um but as you know, with COVID, none of that's easy right now, even getting a fence. But I figured first things first, let me go see what I'm supposed to do. Uh my wife and I lived on, and our kids lived on three seventy-five Pearl Street. For twenty years. Uh we moved out of the area for a few years for a job and came back and bought this house in twenty eighteen. And that's, that's about it. I I don't think I did it because it's good as a job of Moon Burger. I think I may have beat the first gentleman on my draw. But I I tried to those boxes on the right, I tried to say are the panels. Uh it's about seventy feet. My tape measures only sixteen, so it's pretty close. But I think that leaves me seventy-five feet off the front, and then everything else would remain the same. Keep the existing fence. That only goes behind my house uh to my neighbors to the left and to. An open lot that is owned by somebody that lives off one of the courts behind me.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I'm looking for help because there I I don't really see another way. There is a um, there is a. I would call it a four-foot wire fence that's in the spruce that when I bought the house, it's been there, probably. I would call it a four-foot wire fence that's in the spruce that, when I bought the house, it's been there. It probably grew with the trees. Uh, we do have a dog. He's a little bigger than, um, that lady's dog that was here, so he's not at risk of jumping over anything. But, uh, I, I believe it's, uh, right thing to do is just get a little privacy and, um, do it in a manner that fits the neighborhood. So that's what we're trying to do.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
You have a fence on that side because you have a pool, correct? As the fence you're referring to, a little wire fence?
Yeah, they fenced in the property before the pool.
Okay, so your pool's fenced in.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. So where would this, if we grant this variance, you're saying this would be in your pool?
Well, the, the fence, the boxes that I drew.
Yes.
That, that's really the, um, I'd say it's probably eight feet outside of the, uh, yard. And I have the big spruce trees. I guess I'm being a little dramatic. It wouldn't be in the middle of the pool, but it feels like it would be.
Okay, but you'd be able, with what you have right now, you'd still be able to maintenance around your pool, cut lawns, et cetera, correct?
I'd still need a variance.
Yes.
Yeah, when Jimmy looked at it the way it is, I have, uh, mature pear trees, spruce trees and blueberry trees that I'm, I'm not trying to cut down.
I hope you don't. They're nice.
No, they're beautiful. The people were gardeners, and they left us, uh, e- everything's great, except for the little fence in the spruce tree in the first two years. Um, the trees are so big, they're like the one on, um, uh, Miller Lane, the big brick house with the giant spruce trees that are now getting eaten. I think they have the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're that size. They're really nice.
Darling, I can't remember which one.
The Inglesby's House.
Or Inglesby's House?
Yeah, and amazingly, I looked at those the other day, and they are starting to look like mine first time ever. But there is a neighbor that's, um, to the right of me, a couple of houses that they have the same problem I have. And now they have, you know, net fencing up all over the place and, and metal fence and all, all these things to keep the deer out. And I, I just, one, I think it, it doesn't really look very nice, but it's not permanent, so they could do what they want. I, I'm just trying to make it clean.
Deer have become a menace. The deer have become a menace up there for sure.
Well, you know what? It, it was so cold over the winter. Like, I, I, they just didn't have anything to eat. Usually there's enough here. And I'm lucky because the lot between myself and the owner of Dallas, uh, the midtown location is, it's not, um, they didn't build on it. It's, it's somebody else bought the property and they just use it, and the deer usually stay right in there, and they don't bother anything else. But I guess that wasn't the case.
They're, they're ruthless at our, near our house too, and, you know, Irish spring soap doesn't do the trick either. So don't bother.
I, I sprayed them in the middle of the winter when I could see that I lost the tree and lost another one, and it looked like the more I sprayed, the more they ate.
Yes, I know. I, they eat my flowers as quick as I plant them.
I do think.
Is approximately twenty-five feet from the road.
Yeah.
That gives you a good reference.
Yes.
Not so all that far.
So you were correct saying that if you follow the, the town code of thirty foot, the fence would go through your pool.
Yeah, it would. It's on an angle fit on the house, so the, but the back far right corner, it would definitely be there.
Yep. I'm looking at it right now.
That's a hardship for me.
Is the chain link fence still there, sir?
Is the which one?
The, it stated that there is, uh, at one time, a chain link fence in two thousand and six. Is that still up?
Yeah, it, it's not chain link. Um, they may have called it that. It's, um, it, it's just a wire, it's a wire fence. They put wood on it. It has posts. It's painted green. You can't even see it. It just blends in with the trees in the back and the left. And then I have a, uh, uh, enclosed, a, uh, what do you call it? An automatic gate? You know, so that for the pool that it, it shuts auto-close.
Very nice.
Any particular reason for being five feet from the road? Because originally you had six foot.
I did have six. I, you know, I don't know. When I was looking at it, I was ju, I was trying, I looked at, you know, I get confused with the guys that own Dallas, but they, they live at the end of Arnold where it loops around, and it's the dead end all the way in the back. It's not called Arnold for some reason. Um, what they did is they seemed to step it off of their spruce trees, and their trees look really nice. So my guess is they're doing it so you can get in there and clean a little bit and keep the tree growing on the bottom, and hopefully it'll come back. But I, I didn't want to get it so close to the fence that I would, um, that it's going to kill the tree anyway. I, I don't know if that's why they did it, but if you follow, if you go off the front of my house on the left of Arnold and go all the way down to the end, there's a loop, and one of the Dallas guys has a nice white six-foot fence, and it's probably five feet off the road. And he probably has two, two feet to get in there to clear, because when I put the fence up, other than crawl under the spruce trees, I can't get in that little section.
Right.
I see your problem right now. Okay. And I see it right there.
Probably, or, um, his parents, John's parents. And, um, I understand and, and can sympathize with you about the deer. You should take a ride on thirty-two and see how some of the spruce trees and some of the other trees, they truly look like umbrellas because the deer have eaten around the bottom of them. Our neighbor, same thing happened to our neighbors. They're, I don't know if it's a lack of food or what it is, but they are just relentless.
Yeah, you can see where that little pointer is. That's the, that's the vacant, it's not vacant, but that's the second lot that the people up on the hill bought. And you can see all the trees. That's definitely where they were living. They're just, they're coming my way. So I, I don't want to put a six-foot fence around my property. I want to be able to see the trees. I want the neighbors to be able to see this stuff. I want to do all the stuff. I just need to do this little space. Just so, you know, I, I don't really like everybody watching my kids when they're in the pool. I'd rather have a little bit of privacy. And maybe it's just the shock of the winter, the deer eating it and on the road now, but it's changed. Yeah, though, it's going to get worse. I can already see it. Like, I have a pool filter back there, and you couldn't see it from either side, my backyard or the street, and now it looks like it's in the street.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, if, if I'm not out of line, I'd like to make a motion. We move this to public hearing.
Okay. Anybody going to second that?
I will.
Could you take a roll call, please, Gabby?
I, I had Mr. Porter first and Andy second?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Turkle eleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Flood.
All right, I appreciate it.
Next month, we'll go into a public hearing. Uh, Gabrielle will update you on that. And you're all set.
All right, thank you. You guys have a good night, ladies. Thanks.
Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah, we're excited to be back. It's, you know, two years goes quick. We, we, we were gone for too long, too long.
It's great to be where you are.
All right, thanks. Bye.
Bye, thank you. Thus ends the educational part of the meeting.
How'd I do? Am I right, or?
You did a good job. You did a great job. Uh, I, we've been, I've been informed and contacted with the supervisor over the past couple of weeks, and, uh, we've come to a conclusion that we all have to come out from under the bed at some time. So starting July, we're going to have our meetings, public hearings, our meetings will be in the Brat Center. It seems to be the best of all choices. We can spread out more. We can control the environment a lot better. Um, town's opening up all their meetings anyway. Finished with the, uh, the Zoom comes July. So the planning board, us, the town, all the boards will be meeting in public. And I opted for the Brat Center because its layout is so much better than what it would be in a town hall for us. We can spread.
I am not a hundred percent sure that we can use the Brat Center after July. I have to confer with the clerk because there was a group that had signed up for Wednesday nights and had been using it for Wednesday nights for six years.
Well, the supervisor sent out a note to the clerk to, uh, clear the deck for the cl- planning board and the zoning board of appeals to use the Brat Center.
Okay, he has the ultimate authority.
Yeah, I know. That's the conversation.
Where, where is this?
Senior Center.
Oh, senior center. Gotcha.
It's nice. It's a very nice area. I know we've gone there to vote a few times and, you know, other functions too, conventions.
We have our Republican meetings there.
You're safe, and it's pretty much nice inside. You know, we can spread out. We don't have to be on top of each other and compete whatever setups there are for the courts and all that other stuff. So that'll be a requirement for the applicants also? They'll be coming in? Yes.
Yeah.
Will we, will we no longer be offering these meetings for the public on Zoom?
No.
I think that's too bad.
I agree with you, Andy.
I mean, not for me. I don't mind coming to the meetings, but I feel like this is one thing that I really found, um, beneficial for the public was to, it makes it so much easier for the public to be able to listen, to be engaged. And I, I, I know it's, it's not just this, this board, but I feel like all the municipalities should really look at continuing, um, the ability for the public, maybe not so much to, to, to take part, but at least to view, um, the meetings. So.
You know what? You made a very good point with the view of the meetings. Uh, there was a possibility we can have a camera setup and then put it out onto YouTube. I mean, well, we're many, right? We're in public, no big deal. I'm just.
Chairman, what, what he, this is doing, and what our board did was they had Facebook Live. I agree with trying to keep the public involved and up to date somehow. Uh, I would volunteer to put my phone Facebook Live to let everybody see and whether you let them respond or not. I mean, the way that Aesopis does it, yes, they are able to respond by using Facebook Live prior to COVID. They did this. And then when COVID happened, then they went Zoom and, uh, and in addition to Facebook Live. So I, I would like to make a recommendation that maybe we could, um, present the board with continuing some kind of public communication lives.
Didn't they already have it? Though I, I've, I've watched, uh, some of the meetings on Facebook Live just this last, uh, last week.
Town Board does, yeah.
Town Board already has, uh, Facebooks. I think the infrastructure is already there for that, right? What, what do they use? The, uh, the, does the, do they use a little camera?
Nope. It's all town clerk and supervisor.
What does that mean?
They use their phones.
The clerk has, I, I think the town, the town, uh, the supervisor uses, I think, three tablets, and the clerk has hers. So that's how we get the setup all throughout the entire room.
These are their personal devices that everybody's using?
Yep.
And, and then they, uh, how does it all come together? How do they all get to the one? So that they're all on the same Facebook page?
I, I apologize. I'm a lowly building inspector. I have no idea how they do it.
I think we could, we should be able to refer this back to the suit, the, uh, the clerk, town clerk, and see what they use and follow their same infrastructure recommendations. They should have a question that we could, we can kick into.
Gabby is pretty up on it too, and, um, you would have to, first off, you'd have to, like, town clerk and town of Ulster have their own Facebook account. I think that you'd have to start your own, like, town of Ulster ZBA account where that would be Jason, town of Ulster, um, that way. And then maybe Gabby be in charge of that town of Ulster, ZBA, town of Ulster Planning Board. Just hypothetically, I'm going here with this. But you would have to have an account for them, um, a free account. You don't pay for it. It's, it's free. And Gabby would possibly be provided with a, an additional laptop to be able to put his Facebook live.
Then everybody logs into the same account, and then we can use our.
Correct. Yeah. There you go. That, see, these kids are paying off that we have. My teenagers teach me all this.
I'm probably the only person in this entire Zoom communication that is not on Facebook. They won't be.
Uh, no, you're not alone. You're not the only one.
I don't like how they track. I don't like how they chase you down. I don't like the AIs they use.
Exactly.
I agree, but I enjoy watching the, the meetings live. I did, I mean, now that COVID's over, I probably won't have time to do it, but, um, it was a good fight.
Back to normal life, whatever that's going to be. I don't know what it's going to look like. Well, we can continue with this and investigate it. I'll make a few calls and see how do we do this. You see, you guys know Facebook. I don't deal with it. So if you think we can get a link, I'd like to, we get an official link through the town of Ulster, it's only Board of Appeals. All right. If the town already has a, uh, town board already has it, then maybe we could just use that. Like you said, follow their infrastructure and then have a link over to us.
Right. Or Jason needs to chime in here because that's who is going to come back to. What do you think about this, Jay?
About having our own Facebook, um, broadcast?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that, um, maybe you should coordinate with, uh, the town clerk and see if there's something that she can arrange, not just for this board, but for the planning board as well, since I think the public would be interested in observing both boards, similar to how they can observe the, um, the town board meetings.
I agree. I did briefly speak with Suzie, and I told her I may have to go down there and have her show me exactly what she does. So we're going to have to have the setup in another building where they have it set up in the courtroom. So we're going to have to figure that out one way or another.
It's going to be all on Wi-Fi anyway, and Brat Center does have Wi-Fi, I believe.
They do.
Um, because I know they did voting through there, so they were able to send data and information. Uh, so.
Right track. Jason didn't say no. Yeah.
It may not be technology that we will be able to have up and running by July, but I, I, I do believe that.
We don't have a by July. Let's shoot for August.
Yeah, but I do believe it's, it, this is definitely, you know, I, I'm only speaking because, you know, I, I, I've, I've been sitting on the ZBA meetings for the town of Sawgerties, um, for some other things, and it's just very, very, uh, beneficial to be able to monitor those meetings, especially the public hearing is not open yet for something, but they're leading up and to dealing with things that we really need to be aware of, and it just really is very good for the public to be able to be, be, have access to the information as it's happening.
We can ask, we, we can ask, and we'd like to do it in July. If we can't, we definitely want to see this thing up and running by August.
And even if it's not available, even if it's not feasible to run it live while it happens, to put it up on the YouTube channel for the public to be able to go up and access soon thereafter.
Okay, I'm cool with that. Hopefully live would be, but either.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, you know, we can't be spending the town's money on cameras and technology right off the get-go, so I'm just. Well, for all of our, all of our previous meetings, just so you, all of you know, all of our previous meetings, the audio has always been accessible on our website. Okay. It's the audio. Just so you're all aware.
That was after our meeting. That was post the meeting, but what Andy and I are seeing.
Audio, correct.
Right. So that was after the meeting, but it's always good. I, I don't know. I, we just like to see them.
We're just going to go ahead with it. Idea, let's do it.
Thank you. Thank you. I must call them supervisor, Mr. Chairman.
Whatever. Okay, so next meeting, we're, we're live, right? Next meeting, we're at the, at the.
We're at the Brat Center.
Okay.
At seven P M.
Seven, nothing changes with time. We're just going to change position. So I mean, I have to come, I have to wear pants instead of shorts.
I know it. Box and shoes on.
I know, man. I had to take the pizza away from the side here. Unless anyone else wants to talk about something else, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
No. Thank you, everybody. And great job, Kevin.
Thank you. I hope you have a nice, clear sky tomorrow morning.
I hope so too. I, I truly do, but I.
Is, is there a motion to, all right, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Night.
Aye, aye.
Have a good night.